Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time for us to get started with our city council meeting today, and we'd like to welcome you here to join and be with us. And we'll begin by asking the city clerk to call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
And next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Chaplain Steve Grubbs from the Elizabeth Hospice. Chaplain? If you'd all remain standing for the invocation.
Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Invite you to remain standing for the invocation. Please bow with me. Almighty God, we thank you today for your presence among us and for your willingness to come alongside and strengthen us for the tasks that we have ahead tonight. We're thankful for the gifted public servants here who lead our city, and we ask your blessing on them in these days. And we thank you for the fact that we, the people, have a voice and a vote in this great country in which we live. Help us to work together. We ask that where we have different perspectives that you would allow us to not only be aware of our differences, but to accept them and even to appreciate them so that we can come to the best decisions for the common good. Since you've given us minds to think with, hearts to feel with, and spirits to hope with, may we effectively use them all as we've gathered together. We ask your blessing on all that is ahead for us tonight. Now hear our prayer. Amen.
May be seated.
Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to have Chaplain Grubbs with us in offering the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I see we have a number of students, I believe probably from Rancho Buena Vista. Is that where you're all from? It's a requirement, right? We just thought we were popular, but then we found out it's a requirement. Anyhow, we hope that you have a pleasant experience this evening and that you will learn a lot about how your local government operates. Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda. And do we have any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No additions or deletions, Mayor.
Okay. And then prior to this city council meeting, we had what's called a closed session where we discussed things that need to be, that are relative to land acquisition, things like that. So I'll ask the city attorney to please give us a report on the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to all four items on this afternoon's closed session agendas, numbers CS 1 through 4, no actions were taken that are required to be reported. Status report was given on number 1. Instructions were given to the negotiators on items 3 and 4. And with reference to item number 2, the mayor will appoint a negotiator.
And I'll point myself to that, so if that's... I'll write with the council. Okay. Very good. Next, we have presentations. We have two certificates of appreciation for individuals who served on our Beautification and Improvement Commission. Is Richard Cole here? I didn't see Rick here. Or is Jonathan Connor? Okay, we'll present these then at a different meeting then. Okay, next, we have oral communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak for three minutes on matters that are not on the city council agenda. First of all, we have Chuck Rabel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent Drive, right here in Vista. Reading the paper the last couple of weeks, somebody's looking for me, and I want to come out of hiding. The, I guess, there was legal action with the ACLU about the list of who's got the permit or the registration form right here in Vista. I'm one of them. I'm number 34. And I'm in the book. And I could never imagine that I would be involved remotely, however, in such an issue along with the ACLU. I was at the city council a couple of times when this ordinance came before you. I spoke against it. I still believe that the city has no overriding legal interest in the verbal contracts between two individuals. There was no on-the-street downtown Vista evidence of any action needed to be taken. Nonetheless, it was passed. I can live with that. I did what all good citizens do. I abide by the ordinance. I've used it on occasion, and that's my two cents on that subject. It was an interesting council session when this thing came before you. Don't mean to...
You mean our others aren't interesting?
Dishonor you. It was right out of Mel Brooks and Blazing Saddles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Next, we have Albert Verrick. Mr. Verrick?
Well, I told you I retired the last time, but I was asked to come out of retirement temporarily. Even my doctor said, "Why don't you get back to what you were doing?" And there's something that happened that triggered me the other morning. I'd been here before about our bad sidewalks in the area where I live. And this young lady jogging on the sidewalk on Bon Air, 1400 block, I watched her trip and fall. And it's a terrible sight to see, trip and fall on those sidewalks and go down in that concrete, because it was just about three months ago I helped this elderly gentleman fall, and it's tough lifting him. Him and his wife and I both lifted him up off there, and I fell once myself. And I'll tell you, I know we've done something. Larry Parrish did fix one corner problem, but we've got so many bad spots out there that most of the joggers jog in the street. They won't jog on the sidewalk. And we used to have a walker always walk in the street because it's safer. The sidewalks are that bad. And we really need something to do about our sidewalks. But what really brought my attention too, I don't know if you're ARP members, AARP, if you get this bulletin, it's about Kirkland, Washington, about their streets and such. It's a very, very interesting thing about crosswalks and all different things. And you know, I don't travel too much, but the last two years I've been going to Idaho and up to Reno, and I just see things all the time, how to make our city better, simple things. I remember the crosswalk you removed there on East Fistway. My gosh, I've seen so many ideas how to make a nice, safe crosswalk. Well, here's one right here. But I just see things all the time that you people need to work on these things and get involved with them, because I just see them all the time. But our sidewalks really need fixing. And there's an example across the street where the lady tripped and fell. We have, what is it, Willow Creek Homes, about 45 of them. When they built the project, they put pepper trees three and four feet from the sidewalk. Well, it's stupid. Those trees are going to lift the sidewalk, and we're going to have dangerous sidewalks. And as a taxpayer, I don't think I should be paying to repair sidewalks when somebody else caused the problem. Those trees should be removed and planted something that's not going to lift the sidewalk. It's, they should look at some of this. On Foothill, we've got departments, all the trees are lifting the sidewalks. Somebody's responsible. And I think the owners should remove those trees even if we have to fix the sidewalks.
Thank you, Mr. Verrick. Can you please conclude?
Well, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Michael Spencer?
My name is Mike Spencer. I live here in Vista. Over a year ago, the city of Vista enacted an ordinance in an attempt to impose some order on the chaotic day labor situation that infested the Vaughn Shopping Center at the corner of Santa Fe and Escondido Avenues. I've heard about that already. And for a time, there was a substantial improvement. Currently, the condition has rebounded to the point where 50 to 60 day labors, the vast majority of whom I insist are illegal aliens infest that site again on a daily basis. Last week, at 1:30 in the afternoon, we witnessed at least six of these day labors in a prone position on an island of grass within the parking lot, lounging, sleeping drunk, who knows, but obviously in no fear of the authorities of any type. This situation is unacceptable to me and to the vast majority of legal law-abiding citizens of this city. And for those who continue to insult our collective intelligence with a tired refrain, they're just hard workers here to feed their families, let me point out a horrific and disgusting crime that occurred last week in Bonzel. And in case you don't know about it, you have in front of you the newspaper report. A woman was raped and stabbed 75 times by two illegal aliens. Let me repeat that. In Bonzel, last weekend, two illegal aliens raped a woman and then stabbed her 75 times and left her for dead. And yes, I am sure they were illegal aliens. Apparently, the North County Times did not judge this. It's event news worthy enough to print in our Vista edition. That's why I gave you the copies of the article. We're calling tonight upon the Vista City Government to forcibly and publicly state its opposition to illegal immigration. Furthermore, we call upon Mayor Vance and the city council to contact ICE and request assistance clearing the illegal alien-infested shopping center at the corner of Santa Fe and Escondido. I have very strong suspicion that local law enforcement will enthusiastically applaud this decision. If you need any help finding any of those folks, you know where to find me. These two actions will affirm the city's commitment to reduce the adverse impact of illegal immigration on Vista and additionally send a strong and motivating message to the illegals that it is time to move on, preferably to the other side of the border. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Eric Wallace?
I live here in Vista. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and city attorney, Mr. Piper. Tonight, I brought something that might assist you in dealing with the ever-present problem of illegal immigrants in the city of Vista. A spine. Last year, when the citizens and business owners of Vista were urging the city to deal with the problem of illegal hiring practices at the Vaughn Shopping Center complex, Mr. Piper referred to us as extremists. Mr. Piper, do you think Mr. and Mrs. Courtling, parents of Amy Courtling, the girl that was killed by an illegal alien drunk driver, think our position is extreme? Or do you think the woman who was raped, stabbed 75 times and left for dead, as you heard and as you know, in Bonzel, think our position is extreme? She's, by the way, laying in a hospital bed tonight as we meet, recovering, probably wanting the border sealed, if in fact they were illegal aliens. That's all I've got prepared. But would you step up and do what you're mandated to do and protect the citizens of this city and consequently the neighboring areas?
We're not mandated to protect the neighboring areas.
Well, let's start with Vista. How's that, Mr. Mayor?
We've done a very good job of protecting the citizens of this city.
Well, as of yet, none of your family members or my family members have been killed by an illegal alien, but are we going to wait till that happens?
Seriously. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Are there any items from the city council to remove from the consent calendar? Mr. Gronky?
Yeah, Mayor, tonight I'd like to pull items 7, 9, and 12.
Are there any other items that any member of the council? We've had also requests from the audience to remove C-9 as well. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the remaining portion of the agenda?
Approval of the balance of the agenda?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, the remaining portion of the consent calendar is adopted. We'll begin with item number C-7, which is the Buena Vista Creek Trail Extension Grant Applications.
I have some questions of staff. This project, we've been waiting for quite a while, and I know you've been working on it pretty diligently for quite a while, too. Where's it stand right now? Can we see the fruition of this project here in the near future?
The project is almost fully designed. We are just in the process of obtaining permits from the regulatory agencies, Fish and Game and Army Corps, to complete the full package to be able to develop the trail.
Okay. For those in the audience, basically what this is, is a grant application to finish off the creek walk that would basically go from Wildwood to Bringle, as soon as a developer comes in and does their little piece of it, too, so. Also, too, to go along with that, I know there's a grant application here, but isn't this project already funded already? I mean, we're hoping that we can go ahead and pursue this. We hope we get the applications of the grants, but we'll still pursue it anyway.
That's correct. We would have to, if we were going to be awarded these grants, we would have to wait until these grants are awarded to award construction of the project. So there is some potential that we'll have a delay with construction of the trail project if we wait for the full extension of these grants, but we're eligible for some half a million dollars for the grant. So in staff's opinion, you know, we can wait until probably the turn of the year, around January or February, we'll have a real good understanding as to whether or not we'll be in the top running. And if we know we're not, we can move forward with construction, because yes, it is already funded.
Okay. So basically, we're going to postpone the project a little bit since to see if the grants come in and also I guess the permits, too.
That's correct.
Know what's the timelines on the permits?
The permits should be done by November, we expect. So because that's right in the middle of the, or the start of the wet season, we probably wouldn't start construction until later anyway, so.
Can we start construction of the project and still get the grants in later?
No.
The payback? No. So we have to wait on the grants to see if...
If we want to be eligible, but we feel like we'll be, we'll know if we're in the running before we really get to construction on this project, anyway.
So it's basically February, probably the timelines now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this item?
I'll go and make a motion for the approval of the item, Mayor.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. I'm sorry? I did push it. All right, reset it. No, it's not blinking. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
It's blinking.
Okay, well, it's... All right. Okay, and that's unanimous. Moving on, the next item to be pulled from the consent calendar was item C-9, Regional Winter Shelter System and Emergency Shelter Declaration. We have one gentleman that would like to speak to this. Should we hear him first?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chuck Rabel.
Good evening again, Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent. The, just want to caution folks in that there's been, if you look at the full document that's in front of you, you can quickly conclude that there's an industry out here now that didn't exist 10, 15 years ago called the homeless industry. Right here in Vista, we have a brick and mortar dedicated to the homeless. If you look at pages 27 to 28, there's a reporting requirement for this funding for both a qualitative and a quantitative analysis, including, including what are unmet needs that would justify additional funding resources. Number 8 there. And there's another one on that same page. If you go to the next page, you'll see that, heck, we got professionals now involved with this. Cal State San Marcos and Public Health at the San Diego State University. This obviously is no longer what the public used to view as a temporary situation. And again, my, to me, there are flags raised here. No problem with what's in front of you tonight, but caution going forward, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gronky, you had a question?
Yes, I did, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to just concur with Mr. Rabel's caution on this, but I see it as a good thing. In reality, I think this should have been done a long time ago, the region coming together and trying to address this problem. Unfortunately, it took this long to get to this point, and in the meantime, Vista stepped up over and over again. The couple of questions I do have is, right now Vista has the Alpha Project, it has the Operation Hope, and it also has Chris Maguson's Solutions for Change. So is this going to in any way impact those negatively, really?
No, the city of Vista's participation in...
Push your button?
I did. Maybe I'll get closer. City of Vista's participation in the discussions, at the very beginning of that discussion, it was made very clear that we would not support or recommend anything to the Vista City Council that would in any way hamper their ability to operate as they have been, and not only that, but that the accountability model that the three programs in Vista use was very near and dear to our heart because we've seen the success of it. And that is factored in and built into this program.
Okay. So I got a message from Chris Maguson, I guess along the lines of case management, accountability. So initially, that probably wasn't the model that they were going to take in, but through a little bit of persuasion, they saw the light.
Well, there was a lot of discussion with the nine North County cities and a number of other agencies that are providing services about the most effective model. One of the things that Vista has on its side in this discussion is a history of success in this area. And the goal is, of course, to remove people from homelessness because that overall lowers the costs, not just to our city, but to society in general.
Okay, so basically, this is just another tool to address homelessness, and it's a regional tool?
Absolutely. And part of what this does is it helps all of the cities by working collectively to have a solution so that if we see single men that are homeless in Vista, there are places we can refer them to. Likewise, if they have families in San Marcos that are homeless, they can refer them over to Operation Hope.
Okay, and so if I remember right in reading this information, it's church-based, isn't it, that they'll be looking for a location in town, preferably a church, but not necessarily, so?
Well, there are a number of different components. There are the existing shelter programs that we have here in Vista. There is a general population shelter that would go in Escondido at the Salvation Army. And then there's also Bread of Life, a general population shelter in Oceanside. In addition, there are the rotating shelter programs that have gone on throughout the years, one coastal and one inland. We have had that happen in Vista on occasion. It hasn't happened with regularity, but we did want to leave that possibility open because that is another tool, another opportunity. And yes, those people are also subject to the case management process that ours are.
Okay, so as the rotation takes place from city to city, and it comes up to city's time to step forward, does council be notified of that?
Well, this is actually, these are very small shelters in churches, the rotating ones, and it's only a two-week timeframe, generally. So it's, it wouldn't be one that, we would certainly let you know, yes, but it isn't one of what we would think of as the larger rotating shelters that goes from city to city.
Okay. And the last question I have, and I think it goes along, Mr. Rabel brought this up, too. What does California State University have to do with this?
Well, some of us want to be sure that the program actually has the effect that we've been told it will have. And one of the best ways to find out, and one of the best ways to qualify for additional grant funding from the federal government, is to have a third-party objective analysis of the success of the program. From the city standpoint, if this comes back in a year and we're looking at it and we're able to stand up here and say, "We believe that it had the desired impact. It didn't just get people out of the cold weather, but it actually helped move them off of homelessness, off of the streets, and into productive life." This is a good way to verify it. It's not somebody's opinion. And from a federal standpoint, a federal funding, that is one of those components that really helps enable the program to qualify for federal funding, which then reduces the local government costs.
So this would be an annual cost to the city, but there'd be a monitoring piece that you'll come back with some analysis saying...
Absolutely.
If it was successful, let's do this again.
Absolutely. And if it isn't, then we'll be recommending either changes or not participating.
I think we do quite a bit in this city already, and I think we should be proud of that fact, and so this is just another thing we can do.
Mrs., or Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. As the liaison here for this whole program and with Mr. Dudley, and it's very emotional when you're talking and dealing with homeless people and people who have problems. And all cities try and do the best they can for them. It's unfortunate that they're where they're at, but the cities have chosen to not wait until the 11th hour on all this. They've been planning this, which has been something that should have been done a long time ago. And they've laid out a nice plan here where it wouldn't cost any city a lot of money. And I think they laid something out very well for all the cities, and I think this is just the beginning to a lot of problems that we can solve down the road. So doing a good job, and I really support what they're doing now.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mrs. Ritter?
I just wanted to be sure, when you say this, we're still going to do ongoing drug testing and case management, and we're still going to have Operation Hope here in Vista.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that was imperative, that it continue unimpeded.
Okay, I confirm that. And then also, this $5,000 is going to this regional program. Well, to remove people from homelessness, they have to be motivated. So is this program we're putting money toward, are they going to do case management and drug testing also?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, because I, okay, that's what I support, so thanks.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to see that we now have a regional effort to try and deal with this issue, which I know this has been a desire of the council for a long time, to have everybody pitch in and work on it. We can measure it, and hopefully it'll go down to the point that we don't have to provide homeless shelters to anybody. But as we do, there's a, I understand there's, as Mrs. Ritter was asking, people... But as we do, there's a, I understand there's, as Mrs. Ritter was asking, people who don't wish to get off drugs or whatever will not be accepted, correct? And where will those people be referred to?
If somebody comes to one of the shelter sites, and they are under the influence of drugs, they will be given the opportunity to go to a sobering site. If, you know, and if they want to participate, that's a condition of participating. If they aren't interested in that, they won't be admitted to the shelter. The only exception to that, and this has been the exception throughout our history here in Vista of sheltering people, is if the weather drops below a certain temperature, you have inclement weather, and part of it depends on, the exact temperature depends on whether it's wet or dry. And if it's determined that these people will not be disruptive to the rest of the shelter population, they would be allowed to go into the shelter for that night as a humanitarian, but they wouldn't continue through the rest of the season, only during those extreme weather conditions. So yes, it's, this program throughout is designed to get people off the street permanently.
Mr. Dudley, is this going to be a part of the two-on-one system? I don't think the public generally knows what two-on-one is supposed to be. Do you or what it is as a resource? Would you or Mrs. Romanelli want to speak to what two-on-one does, and will it be listed in that system?
That's a, it's a good question. The two-on-one system is basically an information hotline that's been in place, put in place in San Diego County about two years ago. It's now starting to get a lot of press, and they're starting to get quite a few calls. And it's just any kind of information that you need, I mean, not, you know, like, how do I do my homework, but all the social services, and how do I find out about bus routes, and if I have a ticket, where can I go to court? I mean, it's all of those government and social service-type things. And so it's a general information line that's available. I don't know for certain that will be included in that, but I would imagine so. And the, one of the program managers is in the audience, and I'm sure he's nodding his head, saying he'll make sure that it does. I'm a parent, I have eyes in the back of my head, so.
Mayor, if we have no other discussion, I'd move for approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. All right, that concludes our consent calendar, and our next item would be a discussion item.
April twelve.
April twelve.
Oh, yeah. I was just trying to hurry us right along there, wasn't I? Okay, item C12, which is the Gang Resistance Education and Training Program Grant. Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is obviously an issue that's near and dear to all of us. We're trying to do something about the gangs that continue to infest our neighborhoods and harass our, and harass our residents. So I think this is a good thing. Maybe what we need is just a little definition of what we're getting for this grant.
Well, the Great Grant stands for Gang Resistance Education and Training Program. It is a new acronym to Vista. I don't think a lot of people have heard of this one before, but it's actually quite exciting. It takes the drug and gang prevention education to an earlier level in the schools. Right now, we have the SROs that work at the high schools, but what's been missing is a component to get the elementary and middle school kids. And we've seen that drugs are being offered to kids younger and younger, so it's really important. This, the funds we're paying for deputy time and training and travel expenses to train deputies to teach a class at the, I believe it's five elementary schools and two middle schools. And it's, I think, a thirteen-week course. And they'll have, they'll, they'll make a mentorship type of relationship with the kids and teach them a lot about their choices, their decisions, how their decisions can affect the path of their lives, and really encouraging them to take a positive path in their lives as opposed to choosing some wrong criminal activities.
Okay. You know, I sit with a subcommittee of school district personnel, Captain Pendergast was there just yesterday, and some city folks, and we're trying to address this, and we continue to try to address this. And I think this is a great approach. We've thought over and over again that probably something needs to be done at a lower and lower level, age level, because we need to hit these kids hard while they're young and get the message out to them. So I think this is a good approach. I would ask, I would ask this council to seriously consider using some monies to complement this program, since this is an instructional program for the children, to do something with the parents. I would, I would think it'd be a good idea if we were to, after the training at the school sites, to actually do some kind of a pull-in program for the parents of these children, to also give them the same message, because sometimes this message doesn't get home. And I think it's important that it does get home. I think it's so important that it gets home is that, Mr. Dudley, you might talk about some legislation we talked about just recently? Was it AB 1291, is that right?
No?
I think it's 1281.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I'm not the expert on that one.
Okay.
You have a gentleman that...
If I recall, it has something to do with the fact that the state is actually pushing some legislation through, and the government has to sign the legislation that would mandate gang training for parents that, kids were arrested for gang offenses. And I think that's a great thing, because often, oftentimes, there's denial on the parent's part, or ignorance on the parent's part of exactly what their kids are doing out in the fields. And if we were to, to get those parents, put them a little bit, a little fire underneath them, it might be helpful, so. If you're not aware of that legislation, I think you ought to look it up, or maybe you could give them some information about that on our website, could we? And maybe send a letter off to the governor in support of that.
We have sent the letter. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions on that item?
Having said my piece, I'll go ahead and make the motion on this one.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. If there is no further discussion, please cast your votes. Okay, now we are completely done with the consent calendar, and we'll go to item D1, which is a discussion item, and it is about the city goals for 2007 through 2009, and it's an update of what the staff has done to meet those goals.
At the March 22, 2000 workshop, the city council adopted strategic goals for the fiscal year period 2007 to 2009, and the departments integrated these goals into their operational priorities. These goals focus on improving public safety, enhancing the image of the city, and increasing economic development. This item presents a status update on these goals, which will be provided to you on a quarterly basis. Staff is available to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions that council has? Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I go over this list, I see there's some things that we've been successful at, including the passive charter city measure and addressing some of the downtown parking issues. I know we've had a study of that, too. And there's still a lot more to be done, and I'm hopeful that, the idea of beautifying the city has so many pieces to it that it seems that'd be very difficult to even begin to address all that. One question I do have is about number eight, and I know it doesn't really talk to red light cameras, but there's been a lot of talk about red light cameras and their effectiveness. Do we have any kind of study that shows that it's been worth our while to put those in?
Well, after one year of operation, we did do a fairly complete evaluation of the program, which we brought back to the council September 13, 2005. And what we found at that time was, the first year of operation, when we began the year, we had 3,500 violations per month. By the time we had completed that first year, now, this is cumulative with all eight camered intersections at that time, we had 1,200 violations per month. So we saw a significant decrease in the number of times people were running lights and the cameras were going off. We also saw, with the exception of one of those intersections, a decrease in the number of accidents that happened at that time. We have not done a recent review of this, which we can. Looking at the intersections that have the cameras can be somewhat labor-intensive because they actually hand-pull those and evaluate if the drivers causing the accident were going through one of the approaches that is monitored by a camera. And so that we, that would take us a few weeks to pull together, so we don't have that right now.
I'm more interested in the number of accidents as opposed to the number of citations, because that's really the proof in the pudding.
Right, and it did decrease in every, each of the intersections except for one.
Good, good, thank you.
So we're going to put them in every other intersection in the city?
Well, the last, the last time I looked at the numbers, and it's been a few months, but we were down, and we added another camera after this September 2005 report. And the last time I looked, even with the additional camera, we were down to about 800 violations a month, which just statistically, the fewer violations you have, the lower your chance of accidents is. But I don't have the accident numbers with me.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez, you're, no, go ahead, Mr. Lopez. I didn't look at the thing.
Right, I should.
I'm okay.
Sure. Okay, then, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. On item 10, the related to Community Development Department, the work that went into that by Citygate Study was extensive, and I believe the city manager had commented that we'd be provided with an update on what was practicable to institute and how that was going to be done. Is that in the works?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. It certainly is. We have a number of items that we're currently working on. Some of the sections lend themselves better to having some processes and forms filled out, but Mr. Conley just stepped in, and I think he can come up to the podium and state, we were, we just haven't put down in paper to update council on the rest of the processes.
Sure. There's a number of things that the Citygate Study recommended. Most of them, we've actually implemented or are working on implementing right now. There's some that have some real long-term goals, like the general plan update and the zoning ordinance update. We have a new staff person that we've hired for advanced planning, so we have a new real advanced planning department that's handling the general plan update. We have to come up with some new manuals for informing the public and some better ways of getting information out to the public about our development services, so we're working on those right now. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. I look forward to that report.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
Just for the general public, we have 20 goals here, and if they wanted to know what they were, are they on our website or anything? And a lot of them are in progress, and different things are happening with them. It would take a lot of time to read them off and to give everybody information on them, but, you know, just so they know what's going on and what our goals were. It'd be nice if the general public could know that, if they would, I don't know if they're on our website, are they? Yes, no?
They aren't specifically on the website. They are as a matter of course, because they are on our archives that are available through the website, but what we can do is we can put a link from the front page of the website back to that document, and that'll give people easy access to it.
This might be nice for someone who's listening and say, well, what, you know, what are our city's goals and our council's goals?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And then, and then, you know, little update, and kind of every now and then go in an update to where we're going forward. That was just an idea.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. I just wanted to let Ms. Ritter go first.
You're very kind.
You know, when we have our field day out there on all these goal settings, they're actually, they're well-done here in the community, and I actually enjoy doing them, so. But it's important to, a few of these that, that I see, the relationship between the school district and our community has improved, and I would like to continue to see school, business community, the city, to continue more effort and work as a team, as a city, as a team, with your community, you end up doing a lot better in your community, so that's good. There's another one on crime in our community. Two, three months ago, it was, what was it, 17% less crime? And then here, the other day, it's, I believe it's 21 or 20%, 21% less crime in the City of Vista. I think we've done a good job here. The police department has done a great job here. It's improving. The information that our city gives to the community, a lot of times, the community is, you know, what's the city doing? I believe we have a newsletter that comes out and other information that the city has been putting out. And now I hear from the community, since I'm in the restaurant business, a lot of people come in and we talk about things in the community, and it's, lately, it's been a nice positive about, hey, I'm reading about this in a book, so, you know, you're listening to them, and it's good to listen, and it's good positive. The, another thing is the, is the parking study and Parking for the Future of our downtown. I think it's important that we're working on it, and we're going forward with that. So I think we're doing good. I think our staff is doing a good job on working with us and maybe implementing some of these things. And also, our council is working very hard to go out in our community and see the problems that we have and work together as a council. We have a good council working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm kind of happy about the efforts that have been made in redevelopment and in the revitalization of the community. And particularly, I'm glad to see that we're nearing the end of, of the preliminary information that we need and the solutions we need to doing the startup on South Santa Fe. I think that's been a project we've all been looking forward to. I know Mr. Lopez has been, he used to bug me unmercifully when I was the city manager.
I can't talk about that.
But I think that's a great one, so I'd like to commend staff in this report that you are making a diligent effort to meet the goals that we've established as a city, and I think that's very commendable. Also like to comment, Ms. Carlson, I think the report is very good, and I understand this is your first presentation, so we're happy to have you join us and with the presentation. Okay, no, no more. You guys have all had your chance, no more. Mr. Campbell's first anyhow.
And Mayor, I'm glad you commented on, but I wanted to, I was negligent in failing to comment on the city manager and the management team and staff here at the city. This is a fairly extensive list of things to do for a city that has limited resources and always works very hard to accomplish so much with what we have available to us, but you've done really a marvelous job, Mrs. Yulder, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
The last thing, one of our goals was to develop and implement wave sign, or wave-finding signs, and I just saw in our newsletter that we're going to have some installed in our downtown very soon, so maybe you would want to tell the public what, aren't there going to be two different kinds that we're going, who knows about that?
Those are just street signs.
Oh, street signs, well. The note that we listed was the street sign because, you know, says Main Street. Different street signs, but nicer. Well, we have different street signs, which is why we would like to make them uniform and have them look exactly the same, and we're asking council to select whether you like the logo or the city seal.
We all like the logo, don't we?
And so we're trying to have an independent process on that, so. They'll be installed in the downtown soon, aren't they? Is that what I read? We were going to put those in the downtown and have people respond to those. Then the wave-finding signs are, that happens to be a separate program, and we're moving along on that also.
I've seen some of those already, yeah.
I've had some of those, and they're not just meant for, whether they're developments or projects, what we want to do is make sure that we have very clear signage that says Rancho Adobe, you know, and to where, to point to that, Wave Water Park, and to have some common themes with specific local government processes and entities. So those are exciting also, and Mr. Hamm and Mr. Conley are working on those jointly. And I also saw some new Welcome to Vista signs out of Melrose, and those are really nice, too, so I know we're upgrading those. We have about eight of those. We'll be replacing all the existing ones, and then the two out in the business park are brand new. Yeah, they look very nice.
Very good. Okay, do we have a?
Receive and file.
Okay.
Receive and file.
We've received and filed already, so please cast your vote. Do we need to cast a vote on that?
You want to file it, to receive and file it?
Yes, we do. If there's a motion, you got to vote. Okay, very good, and that's passed unanimously. The last item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, and that is the 2006, 2007 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report and 2008, 2009 Objectives. Celia, are you gonna do that one?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. Tonight you're being asked to take two actions related to the city's Community Development Block Grant Program. The first action is to accept the 2006-2007 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER. The CAPER is a required report that identifies the progress the city has made in meeting its annual goals, as well as its overall five-year goals contained in the consolidated plan. Highlights over the last year include 46 households receiving rental assistance, 10 families receiving down payment assistance, we assisted over 17,000 people through CDVG social services, 70 full-time equivalent jobs were created at Vista Village, and the Vista Tasked Community Partnership provided economic development programs that provided 297 residents with one-on-one job assistance and 64 residents with job placement assistance. The second action tonight is to discuss and approve the city's objectives for the use of its CDVG public service dollars. For fiscal year 2008-2009, we are anticipating a total CDVG allocation of $1,002, of which a maximum of 15%, which is approximately 183, 758, can be used for public services. To allocate public service dollars, the city typically issues a request for proposals for programs that benefit low and moderate income residents, and also that help the city meet its goals. Two meetings are required to receive community input. Three meetings were held. The two notice meetings were held here in council chambers, and an additional meeting was held with the San Diego Center for the Blind. The input from these meetings has been used to prioritize the goals and objectives. As a result of the community meetings and other input received, the priorities for public services and public service dollars are ranked from highest to lowest. These are anti-crime programs targeted to youth, for at-risk youth, and programs that reduce a senior's risk of being a victim of crime. General youth programs, senior programs, public services, continued funding and support for programs that address homelessness, special needs, and economic development activities. Other goals identified by the community included infrastructure needs, such as chirping lights at intersections, improvements to public facilities, and housing. However, these goals are most properly addressed by non-targeted CDVG dollars. The CDVG Citizens Advisory Committee and staff reviewed all the goals and are recommending the following ranking for council approval. Previous slide, please. If the recommendation is approved, staff will issue a request for proposal for public service projects in mid-October for the 2008-2009 year. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go on, Mr. Rabel, I owe you an apology. I forgot, I was, your request to speak on item D1 was pushed under my agenda book, and I didn't see it. If you'd like to still speak on it after we finish this item, we'd be happy to hear from you.
But after you adjourn.
Sounds good, all right. Okay, this is a public hearing, and I don't have any requests to speak on this from the public, so council, it's our discussion. Mr. Gronky?
I'll start the discussion. Two items. One talks about the homeless issue, and I know we had, we took action earlier in this meeting about a regional approach. Is the money that we're gonna put towards that coming from this fund, or is that just from a general fund source?
I believe this year's allocation for that program is coming out of general fund, but it can, it can be part of Operation Hope.
I made a statement before now, and I'll say it again, is the first priority on this list is anti-crime programs targeted at youth, and from my experience in the consortium that I have with the city, the school district, and the sheriff's department, we've been rather effective with having parent trainings at the middle school level. I would suggest again that we might consider using some of our dollars to have a similar training at the elementary level that complements the training that they'll be getting with the GREAT program. So just to throw that out there as a possible objective. The last one I have, and it's one I always bring up, is that I think the 15% set aside for administration is excessive, and I think if we could free up some of that money, I think that'd be wonderful.
What was that you said? The last one?
Yeah, we always set aside 15% for administration, which represents about $180,000. It seems like if we would reduce that amount somewhat, we might be able to free up some of our money and give it back to the social services who really need it.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gronky's point was the one I was going to bring up. I think just as an act of good faith, that whenever we can take public funds and put them to functional programs where they benefit the citizens and the community, we should. And I know how hard it is to operate these programs, it takes time, it takes effort, and it takes money, but if we can reduce the percentage even 1% a year, I think that would be a trend in good faith that the council would like to see. At least I know I would.
Okay, any other comments from any member of the council? Mr. Lopez?
Yes, is this the priority that...
Is this the priority that we're going by, or what?
Are you saying, are these in order of priority?
Yes, is this what we're going by?
I think that's correct, yeah.
That is correct. This is the priority that staff reviewed with the CDVG Advisory Commission in terms of from highest to lowest.
Uh-huh. I want to agree with Ms... I'll agree with Mr. Gronky on the possibility of that program grant, what is it, GREAT, GREAT, that program, the police department? What is it?
Oh, GREAT program.
Yeah, GREAT. I think we should go along with what he's saying because it, we need to put more effort in going out in the schools and working at a younger age with kids and educate them, because you can't educate a person for drugs and all that, especially when they're already in high school. I mean, they're already getting in trouble. But if you can approach the youth at a younger to educate them, that's the wrong thing to do, and include the parents somehow, and make it so that they know what's going on. Because many a time, parents are in denial on what's going on with their kids, and so I think that if we can do something with the parents, even if it costs us a little bit of money, we can, we can beat this situation because it, you know, it creates a lot of problems in our community, and so I'll agree with you on that, Mr. Gronky.
Mr. Campbell?
If I may, I think Mr. Lopez's point is well-taken, that we need to get down into the GREAT school and work with the kids, but I would ask that the students who are with us tonight exhibit their leadership and their ability to influence their friends and peers and their family members to avoid getting involved with drugs and with crimes, because it's such a non-productive outcome where you end up in just a miserable downward spiral, and you can make a difference, and I know you will. And please think that through and influence your friends to do so.
Mr. Lopez?
I forgot one other thing, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
As far as reducing the amount to the city, I think, I think we can come up with a bigger percentage. I think it seems like it's a lot of money, and percentage, I would hope to go with you and drop that down a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments by members of the council? I think the list of priorities that we've indicated here are pretty much the priorities that we talked about at our recent joint meeting with the CBDG Board, so I'm thrilled with it, so I don't have anything else to say. And if we're going to reduce that amount, I would like to know where the money's gonna come from to pay for it then.
Reduce the amount, sir?
We're gonna reduce the percentage of money that goes to the administration, administration got to be paid for, so where does it, where's it gonna come from?
Whose budget?
Not necessarily a good answer, but I believe we've had so much experience in operating this over time that we can do this very efficiently and effectively, and...
Still takes a body, and it still takes warm bodies.
I'm gonna have to agree with Mr. Campbell that I think that we've had this going on for a number of years, and probably our people are pretty experienced with it, and we could probably afford to reduce this a minor amount.
I'd like to hear from the staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would only point out that our, if the goal is to shift money from administration to services, if I understood that correctly, the services are capped at 15%, so the, we're not allowed to exceed that, so even were we to take administration from '20 to '19, we wouldn't be allowed to take services from '15 to '16. We could channel that money into other things, economic development or perhaps infrastructure projects. However, we would certainly want to look at how this would impact the program and the ongoing operations, if possible, before we made those changes.
Kind of like a big balloon, you squeeze it in one place, it pops out somewhere else.
That's true.
And you're not gonna get rid of the amount of money that you need to run the program, so if it's not gonna come from this, it's gonna come from somewhere else. I'm happy with the way it is right now. So anyhow, do we have a motion in this discussion? To close the public hearing and to do whatever you'd like to see done.
I would make that motion, to close the public hearing and to approve of the, geez, I don't have the wording, staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation, okay. Do we have a second?
Glad to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Does that mean staff recommendation with the consideration for the anti-crime parent component? Because it fits into the goals.
I think it fits into the goals. I don't think you have to, they're not asking for specific programs here, they're just asking for general areas, and that certainly fits in, I think, and would be a very, very good program, yeah. Any other, Mrs. Gelder?
If I might, Mayor, that the application could be made by the school district for that type of program. You could make that to CDVG to fit into the GREAT grant program as the matching funds, and so that would be a consideration then for the CDVG committee when they review the projects.
I can only say that in conversations with the sheriff's department and the school district, I think that that can happen.
Certainly, and so they can, they can apply, and that would dovetail nicely with the programs that are, objectives that have been laid out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, if there are no further comments, please cast your votes. Okay, and that motion passes with Mr. Lopez voting no. Okay, that concludes the public... Oh, wait, your motion did close the public hearing, too, didn't it?
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that concludes the public hearing, and we'll now go to the remarks from staff and from the city council. First of all, Mr. Piper, do you have any remarks or reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that it was my pleasure to come to Vista two years ago tomorrow, and...
Oh, it's our pleasure, really.
Thank you. But it has been thoroughly enjoyable and been a wonderful experience, and I'm quite pleased to be here and quite pleased with the decision I made to come here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gelder?
Thank you, Mayor. Only that on the next agenda, we'll have the second year of our two-year budget, as well as our five-year capital improvement program with emphasis on the next two years, and it's an exciting budget, primarily the capital improvement budget mainly because of the community projects, but also the money that we're able to recommend and put towards streets. So we'll be evaluating that carefully with you under discussion, and I think we'll be meeting a lot of, a lot more of the council's goals and objectives.
Okay. Also, I, I think it was in today's paper, wasn't it, in the North County Times, we got a rose, and that was regarding an operation that was done by, was it done by ABC or by the sheriff's department, regarding underage drinking?
It was in conjunction with them together and looking at all of the liquor sales outlets, and that they were pleased that no one sold to minors, that all of the ones that they put decoys in and tested, that there weren't any violations whatsoever in Vista.
That's great, that's good news. Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things to celebrate. I had the opportunity on Sunday to address the new, new community church in the circle, and they were celebrating 80 years in being and servicing our community, and they had a carnival, and they just had the greatest time. They, rock and roll band in there, and everybody singing, and just having a wonderful time. So it was a great celebration. The other thing I want to celebrate is the fact that I've been really pushing for trade school in town. We just received, they just received a $600,000 grant from the state, which adds to what they've got from the Gates Foundation, Bill Gates Foundation, and another foundation over $1 million for startup in the next fall, so I think that's really great. Something certainly our community needs. Last thing I have is to note a caution, you know, I keep seeing these numbers on these capital improvement programs go up, and I just want to share, there's a fire station built in Rancho Santa Fe in 2002 at about $2.5 million, and then one in 2006 in Alpine at almost $4 million, so just, I know we're doing the right thing. I'm just really concerned, so I just always have to express that concern.
I forgot one thing, if I, the council would please bear with me. I'd like to mention that this last week, we lost a very important individual to this community, one that has been very active in the community for a number of years. He was on the board of directors for the Vista Irrigation District, and that was Paul Campbell, Sr., passed away, and we're very saddened to hear that. His funeral will be this Friday, and we certainly do wish his family our prayers and thoughts, because Paul Senior did contribute a lot to this community, and we appreciate that. Mrs. Ritter?
I was actually gonna say the same thing, and so I thought through with the family.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
And certainly mine as well. I wanted to mention something primarily for the city manager and for the city attorney to take under consideration. Our national news media, electronic media, sometimes I think do a disservice in the intention of doing a service, and this morning on one of the networks there, they were talking about a hallucinogen which can be picked up in your handy-dandy vitamin store, which is an instant trip, it's a short trip, and it's, they showed kids doing this, and of course, making a YouTube video of it, and they had absolutely no control over what they were doing or what, you know, it was just instantaneous. There's probably one recorded suicide, but they aren't, you know, sure if there's not been more from it, but it looks like something that we're gonna need some legislation, since now it's illegal material that can be picked up very easily. The network went into five stores and got five packages of it, with no problem whatsoever, and it is a federally legal substance, but this really concerns me that these things are promoted in such a way that it might cause our youth to go out and say, "Well, I'll go try that." It's a short trip, and, but I think the consequences can be just disastrous. I'm hoping through your ICMA or other connections, Mrs. Gelder, we might look at, try to get rid of that in San Diego County at least. If not, the federal should be doing it. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. Paul Campbell, Senior, is a dear friend, and he's in our prayers. He's a great man. Also, the amount that we're seeing at the, the amounts for a fire station, and I hope they don't get too out of line, I'm kind of concerned about that, so I hope we can stay in line with those. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, then that concludes our city council meeting this evening, and we appreciate your attendance. Although we've had a captive audience, it's nice to have an audience. So thank you for attending, and we hope that you gained a great deal from being here. So thank you for attending, and we hope that you gained a great deal from being here.